Unfortunately, our president and another member will be here momentarily. We are not doing the honoring part, the honoring ceremony right at the beginning. So I just wanted to give that preface so that they will be here to make sure that we get to honor all of our families and students. So I apologize for that. And we will go ahead and get started. So I hereby call the regular Board of Education meeting this May 7th, 2024 to order at 7:03 PM. If everybody would like to stand with me, you're going to see the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag is in the back. We're going to review the consent. I'm sorry. Madam Secretary, can you please take attendance for us? Bean Kiwi is absent. Camardo?
Here.
Friedland?
Here.
Grumpy is absent. I am here. Fisterer?
Here.
Ronstadt?
Here.
We have him down. Next, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. If there are any items that a member would like to remove and discuss further, or if there is a need for clarification, hearing, oh, sorry, go ahead, if there are any. Hearing none, I would like to entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda in its entirety as presented, which includes the following. Board of Education Meeting Minutes, April 16th, 2024. Board of Education Closed Session Meeting Minutes, April 16th, 2024. Actual payroll bill and checks, or bills and checks, personal report, eighth grade graduation students, consolidated district plan, and equipment furniture disposal. Moved?
Second.
Sorry, Fisterer moved, and Ronstadt second. And then could you please take a vote?
Before I take the vote, notify the chairman.
Oh, and then at 7:05, both President Grumpy and Ms. Bean Kiwi have joined us.
So I am calling the wall on the consent agenda for the two who just walked in. And the reason I say that, oops. Okay. The reason I say that is Bean Kiwi, you first, yes or no?
Yes. Camardo?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
Grumpy? I vote yes. Fisterer?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next up is board communication. This is an open agenda item for any board member who'd like to speak on anything they've tended or seen in the last month or so. So it's open, anyone wants to?
Yeah. I stopped by the prom at Purdy Trails, which was pretty, pretty stinking cute. The decorations were really over the top. The kids and the parents were just having a blast. And I could definitely see that becoming an ongoing tradition. That was all put on by the PTA, which was, which was pretty amazing. But of course, the staff was there to support it, and it was really, it was really cool.
Anybody else?
We had the fifth grade and from both schools come together at the orchestra concert. So it was the first time that they played together here at this building, since they're all coming here next year. And it was really, really fun to watch them and just excited. They were very excited to see the sixth graders play. So it was really neat to have both the concert band, the sixth grade orchestra, and then also have the fifth graders all come together. It's really cool to see. And I know Mr. Fiorino is not here anymore, but I love to tout our music program as well. It is really amazing what Mr. Smith, Mr. Flowers, Mr. Luke accomplish in such little time with these kiddos. So, well, not young kids anymore, but with our students.
I was at that as well. Also, last night, I was at the chorus concert at Indian Grove, which was equally as enjoyable. So yeah, a lot of stuff going on. Anybody else?
Yes, we were just coming from the dinner with the board, as well as some of our teachers, our wonderful teachers, and administrative assistant from Indian Grove. And it was just an amazing experience to get to hear what's going on within the school, and then some of the feedback that we got concerning the district and just wonderful things that were going on. So it was a great experience to be able to sit down with staff that I was not familiar with and just get that feedback.
I just want to say happy Teacher Appreciation Week. And it's been great to watch all of the parents and TCEs come together to do special events for teachers. But I think sometimes the best thing is when it's thank you notes. So reach out to your teachers and just say thank you.
Well put, thank you.
I'm so sorry, I have to move away.
Yeah, go on.
But also, music sharing for fourth and fifth grade at Euclid with Mrs. Thompson, also adorable. And there was Crazy Train. I mean, who would think that that would be a song that we would be playing? But it was really, it was fun, and it was wonderful. And again, just want to say thank you.
Okay, next up is the district recognition for our seventh grade AELA students. Ms. Richie's here, all right.
Hi, I'm Ms. Jackie Richie, thank you for having me tonight. Thanks for being here tonight. I am the seventh grade AELA teacher. Every year, our accelerated language arts students compete in the state's Letters About Literature Program, which is a contest that is through our office, the Secretary of State's Office of the Book, which is actually just our state library. You don't know that term, the Office of the Book, it's actually the state library. The contest is actually an opportunity for our students to challenge themselves to read a book or recall a book they've already read, to express to an author how this book has made them feel or think differently about the world around them or themselves. It's not the usual biggest response essay. This letter is an opportunity to dig a little deeper, connect to the emotions, and show the judges the ways in which they can connect to the story, characters, conflicts, settings, themes, and a depth that are both personal and pointed. The letters that are written in November over a period of several weeks after some discovery lessons that Ms. Milos, our librarian, and I go through with the students. Students are given a chance to reflect on those books that they've read, their choice. They write to the author, whether the authors are dead or alive. There is no expectation that the authors write back, obviously. Letter writing allows for students to write differently than you would in an essay. And so it's a personal form of writing, allowing them to develop detail in their own thoughts, craft in a language that reflects their voice. Letter writing allows students to practice a very important writing skill to a targeted audience. So our middle school students' Level Two topic is books that make you think, books that make you feel. And once these letters are completed and sent off in December, Ms. Milos and I don't know whether or not we will get them back, we'll get the results back in time. Last year, we didn't. So we were able to get them back, and I'm very proud of you guys tonight to have you able to receive your certificates. Not everybody was able to get a certificate. So of all of my AELA students, the following students were honorable mentions. And then we did have two finalists this year. So honorable mentions, if you would come up and receive your certificates, please. Harrison? Yes?
Hey, guys.
Want it up front?
Because then they can be on camera.
So then we're going to actually free to go. Luke, come on up. Luke. Sandy Aurora. Chloe. Zara. Amelia Flippe. Sarah Bronski. Janne Kabasa. Natalia Kowinski, I know she is not able to make it today. Loski? Eva? Melissa? Sam Murray? Jordan? Megan Phillips? Nolan? Cannon? David? David? Sylvie? And our two finalists this year were Jonathan Getz. Congratulations, Jonathan Getz.
Does anybody want to take pictures?
Next up is our TEA comments.
Good evening. We just want to thank you for your collaborative partnership, and we look forward to continuing that thing forward.
Thank you.
Next up is visitors' comments. Any visitors are welcome to approach the board with their question and/or comment. Hearing none, we'll move forward to new business. Whoops, sorry, yes.
It's not, it's not a huge comment.
We're excited.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to acknowledge the accomplishments, the academic accomplishments of the students. I thought that was very nice. And I sometimes feel like I don't see that enough in the schools. So it's really nice to do that, because I see a lot of accolades for different things, for sports, et cetera. But it's nice to see academics recognized as well.
Thank you. Okay, next up is new business, education services.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me this brief opportunity this evening just to give you an update on our progress with our middle school math audit. We are right in the thick of making some really important decisions. I would like to bring a recommendation to the board for approval at our June meeting, hence the purpose for coming this evening with some information. As we're closing in on the final legs of this investigation and the study, it's been a great year of working with the middle school math team. So as I said tonight, I'm here to update you, just tell you a little bit about the process, our timeline that we've been following, and some potential costs that you should expect to see coming through next month. This year, we've done a comprehensive audit of our middle school math curriculum, including both our on-level math curriculum and our advanced curriculum. As a goal with every audit, we are seeking the opportunity to enhance the quality of our math instruction across the district. We're very, very proud of the work that our teachers and our students do in our math department, and we want to make sure that they have all the tools that they need in order to continue that high level of success. This process was collaborative between our math team, curriculum specialists, getting feedback from our student stakeholders as we tried and experimented with some different materials from some different publishers. We did some thorough evaluations of our existing materials, our instructional methodologies, and looked very closely at our students' performance data as we were making these decisions and formulating our next steps. So how did this process play out over the course of the school year? We started out in the fall bringing together a math school, a math pilot team at the middle school, which can be very challenging considering we have nine math teachers. We would love to have everybody at the table to make these decisions, but bringing nine teachers together at any point during the day frequently can be pretty difficult. So when we chose our math team, we made sure that all grade levels and all course levels were represented at the table so that they could bring information back to their teams as we were experimenting with our core beliefs, our values, really lacking in on our foundation, and then looking at materials as the year progressed. So we started with just that. We started with our core belief statements as a math team. We really wanted to make sure that the materials we chose really held true to what we believed good math instruction looked like in our building. And I did share that statement with you in the board memo this evening. I was very proud of our math team for the work they put into this. And I will tell you, when we sent out the survey to the entire math team to get feedback on core beliefs and values, I was shocked by the alignment between all members of the mathematics team in terms of what they really thought math instruction should look like in a middle school setting. Our step two was to evaluate our current materials. It was actually a hard process for me to step into this year auditing our materials because our math results are simply fantastic in this building. Our teachers worked very, very hard, our students worked exceptionally hard, and the results we get are very good. However, we did have some materials, especially the materials we were using in our advanced classes, that are getting very old and no longer supported technologically. And a lot of the content in our materials was becoming significantly outdated. Vocabulary that was being used in the book was no longer familiar to students, making it very hard for them to connect to real-life situations, which is what we want them to do with mathematics. So in that, we really found that while our materials, for the most part, were aligned to standards, that lack of relevancy to life and to situations that kids experience really pushed us to start looking at some of the materials for instruction. So that led us into investigating materials that were out there for middle school math. The team very thoroughly investigated three sets of materials, one from Hooton-Mifflin-Harcourt, one from Eureka Square, and one from illustrative math. We started with a paper review of materials using a rubric that we had agreed upon to evaluate the materials. And from those three, we narrowed it, or we met with all the publishers to make sure that we understood the materials. And from there, we narrowed down to two materials. And the team started looking very closely at the Eureka Square curriculum for middle school as well as the illustrative math curriculum for middle school. At that time, the teacher said, we need to bring the publishers back, we have more questions. So we brought the publishers back again, and they walked through the materials, they walked through the platforms for us, and they basically opened up access to all of our teachers in order to explore, try some lessons, see how they worked with their students over the course of a four-week period. And then the teacher said again, hey, we would like to talk to them again, we have more questions. This is a very thorough team. So I was very, very thankful for the April Institute Day because we could have all members of our math team sitting around the table with our publishers. They gave up their time on that institute day to sit with publishers in the morning and in the afternoon, even during a solar eclipse, to learn a little bit more about the math materials in front of them. From there, I sent them back out to keep trying, keep experimenting, and I asked them to redo the textbook evaluations for a second time, giving me their individual feedback on the different programs. And then I analyzed all of that data and very recently brought that back to them, coupled with the quotes and the estimates from the two publishing companies. Now, I will tell you, I would not show them that, I would not show them the quotes until they really started digging into the data and explaining how they felt about the different materials in front of them. And then when we got to that point, I said, okay, now let's, let's look at the dollars and cents because we want to be fiscally responsible stewards of our community, and I want to make sure that what you're telling me you need as a teacher is also the best choice when it comes to looking at the amount of money it will take for us to put this in place. And then I asked them to leave. I didn't ask for their opinion at that point. I said, you're going to reach out to me in the next 48 hours individually, and you're going to let me know where you're at. So that's where we are right now. I've received feedback from the teachers, but I'm not done digging. So over the course of the last several days, I've been reaching out to districts who have recently implemented both of these different curricular programs in their middle school settings. What I'm trying to find out right now is I want to learn, how did implementation look? What were the bumps in the road? What was expected, what was unexpected? What have you seen in your first year or two in terms of academic results for your students? What are you hearing from your teachers? And I'm in that data gathering process right now. From there, I want to put all that information together to bring a formal recommendation to the board in June. So what will be next really is coming to that final decision, sharing that with the teachers, making sure we're all on the same page, bringing you a rationale as to why we think this is the best place to go, laying out our transition plan. What does it look like for our students moving from elementary to middle school? What does the transition look like for our accelerated programs? What's our professional development plan? And then how are we going to monitor and evaluate in our first year of rollout? So that's what I wanted to bring to you this evening, just share these pieces with you and see if you have any questions at this point in the process.
Anybody have any questions? The only comment that I want to make, and we've discussed it briefly earlier when you do come to your final recommendation, could you please just make sure that you cover for the board the transition for our current fifth graders into sixth grade when we know which program we're going to follow?
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question or comment?
I just want to thank you and your team for all the due diligence that goes into this. You know, this is the foundation for what we're instructing the kids on, and it's super important to get this, get this right.
Anybody else? Okay? Great job, thank you. So that'll be another presentation, it's not going to be on the consent agenda.
Right.
Perfect. Next up is business services, administration and superintendent and support staff compensation for 2024-25. Linder, you up?
Yes, so the recommendation to the board for the administrators and the district support staff is primarily...
Turn your mic up. Thank you.
Okay, the recommendation to the board for the administrators and the district support staff is primarily a 4% increase, which is in line with what the teachers and the other staff are getting this year.
Okay, can I get a motion and a second to approve the 2024-2025 compensation for the administration as presented? Motion.
Second.
Moved by Ronstadt, second by Bean Kiwi. Any comments or questions?
I just think a big comment is that when these are developed, a lot of different components are taken into consideration. And so I just want our public to know that they're not kind of just willy-nilly. There's a lot of thought and process that goes into this along with the evaluation tools that the district utilizes in order to make, for, you know, for Dr. Magerly to make good judgment calls on where she sees things going and how performance is working out within the schools. So I just want to make sure that people know that she is being fiscally responsible and doing the best that she can based on very formal evaluation tools.
Great point, thanks for adding. Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Johnson, could you please call roll?
Bean Kiwi?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
I vote yes. Fisterer?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
Grumpy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up is the administration support staff compensation, 2024-25.
So this...
Five, sorry. Oh, sorry. Next up is the superintendent compensation and contract extension.
Ms. Johnson, I've got...
Do you have another motion?
I have another motion, this is the support personnel.
It's separate, what is this saying? It's the same update coming after you, sir.
Oh, I got you, I understand what you're saying, okay. Nothing else, nothing else for her to present? So we can just go into the motion. Sorry. So let me entertain a motion and a second to approve the 2024-2025 compensation for the administration support staff as presented. Motion.
Second.
Moved by Ronstadt, second by Friedland. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, could you please call roll?
Sure. I vote yes. Camardo?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
Bean Kiwi?
Yes.
Grumpy?
Yes.
And Fisterer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're all on the same page, bro. I'm on the same page. Sorry about that. Next up, superintendent compensation and contract extension. Present? Okay, so let me, yeah, no doubt, absolutely. So let me entertain a motion and a second, having found Dr. Magerly has met the goals and indicators of student performance and academic improvement in her current contract, the board approves a 5% salary increase for 2024-2025 and extend Dr. Magerly's contract for June 30th, 2027. Motion.
Second.
Moved by Ronstadt, second by Friedland. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I will not be voting for this, not because I don't like you.
I think you're doing a great job. I just didn't like the parameters of how this all came about.
I want to say thank you for all the work that you've done, and we are very excited to retain you for another four, three years, and... Excited.
Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Johnson, could you please call roll?
Sure. Fisterer?
Yes.
Bean Kiwi?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
Grumpy?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
And I vote no. Motion carries.
And next up are the committee reports. Policy Committee is up first. Mrs. Friedland, you are the chair.
I was so thrown off from my earlier plan, President.
You're a good stunt double.
I, you know, somebody, somebody's got a...
I think she's better.
Oh, we're getting fancy in this meeting. No, so a lot, a lot of the updates for our policy had to deal with Title IX, and it was a lot of language that were, it was fine that you said it was just approved two weeks ago, where we, the, the press, oh my gosh, the policy is now pulling out the sexual harassment component of just the Title IX sexual harassment policy. Instead of that, they're going to cover a much broader spectrum of anything having to... Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, guys, I really am blistered today. It's components that have to deal with any type of discrimination, whether that be for race, gender, sexuality, any type of identity pieces and components, that that's now going to be covered. There still is a sexual harassment piece under one of the policies, but that's just in specific for filing agreements for that particular item. So it is expanding to include more information. The other piece that we talked about were our fund balances and how that is going to be left to the Finance Committee and, and Mr. Berry or Dr. Schuster. We had the, the... Thank you, the position paper, losing all my words. The position paper that kind of designates the 50 to 55% and how much we have to maintain in terms of fund balances, but that is actually not in our policy. So we just want to make sure that that information doesn't get lost with your transition. And then the majority of the other pieces were updates. The only other big one was staff development, and that's going to be... and that's gonna be reviewed by Dr. Magerly and her team over the summer to make sure that we're set up and ready to go for continuing education and professional development for our staff members. And then we talked about-
There's just, there's one new policy. I don't have it in front of me, but there's a brand new policy also in there.
The first one. Literally, so. The first one that we addressed. Sorry, we are gonna have a new read for the Title IX grievance procedure. That's, oh, no, I'm sorry. My gosh, guys, I am so sorry.
I know, I haven't, I can literally-
It is for the discrimination and harassment on the basis of race, color, and national origin prohibited. And we're gonna post that on the site. We won't approve these until, um, until the July board meeting. So we can have a first read and a second read, and then go ahead and approve them at that point. But we did want to address the committee portion that we discussed at our last meeting for future topics. And there is nothing in our policy that designates whether it is one-year assignment or two-year assignment. So that is left up to the discretion of the board president as to how he, well, as to how they would like to manage the committee assignments. So that is our feedback to you, Mr. President.
Okay. Play a former. It's fine. Not a problem. That's it for the update? Not that that's it, as if it was. Nothing. I don't want to cut you off. Great. Uh, next up is the Benefits Committee. Mrs. Johnson, you are a board representative.
Nothing to report, because they meet tomorrow.
Groovy. N S S E O, Mr. Ronstadt?
Yeah, so lots going on. We've got E S Y starting the second week of June, and, uh, you know, the attendance rates for N S S E O are something like ninety-seven percent of the kids go to E S Y when they all qualify, and they all got I E Ps and, and that. So that's a, that's a big effort and just kind of extends the, the school year. Um, we worked on and finished the first superintendent evaluation. We use Super Evolve, so we like the tool. Here that we reused at, at N S S E O, and, uh, Dr. Schuster's doing an awesome job, and we're really excited about the next steps, and continue to focus, you know, really, I think the primary focus right now is just better alignment with the member districts. And, you know, taking up that relationship to make sure we're providing the, the services and the value that our, our member districts are looking forward, looking for. Um, and then the next thing we're doing in June is we're reviewing a couple finalists for strategic planning. Um, so that's gonna be another effort to, you know, really dig deep into the organization and see what we can, we can really do next. And I'm excited about that. And with my recent move in district, I'm hoping to stay on as, as board president.
I do have a question. So we approved our version of the budget. Has that been approved by all of N S S E O?
Uh, all of the member districts?
Yes.
I, I guess that report, I don't know specifically off the top of my head if that's, that's done. Um, I know that there's been very close coordination with the, with the finance folks and N S S E O in putting together this year's budget, especially with some of the, the pending capital projects that they're looking to do. Um, so I don't think we've ever had any issues getting with-
Well, I guess it's more of a procedural question. So do we approve it, and then you guys approve it? Or have you already approved it, and then it comes to us? Oh boy.
I, I would probably say that, uh, so the, the N S S E O budget is done rather early.
Sure.
Because it needs to be communicated to the boards and then incorporated into the member districts' budgets. So I, I think we approve the submitting of that. I don't know, to answer your question though, if we approve the approvals of the budget. I think we've already kind of approved the budget as a whole.
Kind of my thought, that's it.
Yeah, and then it, and then it comes back. But it does, you know, the, the budget, you know, N S S E O differs to, to River Trail because we have a pretty fixed revenues, we're sure, here. But at N S S E O, if a new student attends, there's a tuition that gets associated to it, and the, the costs are very low. So we're even making some adjustments there to, you know, just to improve the, uh, the, the speed at which they can move on stuff. So like, you know, in, in the past, if they bring in a new student, they might have to wait, and it's kind of ridiculous. They'd wait weeks or a month to get a position approved to be, which is already paid for, to then fit. So now we've changed up some policies to allow them to, you know, if they get a placement, they can go start hiring, you know, right on it. Um, and then I know there are some talks, and Lindell can, can touch on, on some of those about, um, you know, but part of that strategic planning too is looking at some of the construction needs. You know, basically, the buildings there are kind of in the shape that, you know, Euclid and Indian Grove are. Um, so they're looking at their, you know, kind of generational outfits that are, are going to be needed at some time.
Sure.
And obviously, again, the funding model's different. They don't, they don't, they're not, and N S S E O is a taxing body. It doesn't hold, um, you know, reserve funds. It, you know, generally has kind of a zero balance or a zero budgeting plan. So, you know, we're, we're trying to assess what we want to get done, what kind of the vision is, and then help to map out the, uh, the, the projects in such a way that the, uh, the districts can then also plan on expenditures related to those and handle it as much as possible. We've already added a, uh, an extra, or increased the fee to the non-member districts so that we get a, as a member district, we get a pretty substantial discount on the tuition. Um, and we're in part subsidized then by non-member districts. So they, they pay a, an, an added cost, and we have a waitlist. So if you ever question, like, I know we, you know, we per head at N S S E O, we spend a lot of money. But there's, there's a waitlist of surrounding districts, which by definition are geographically not necessarily part of our district, and, you know, that want to have or send kids there. And we certainly take a, or N S S E O takes priority of the member districts, of course. Um, but, you know, there's, the services are very good. They're, they're expensive, but they're still, they're cost-effective for what they have.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry to throw that curve.
No, no, that's fine. It's, it's, you know, even having been on, being on this board for, you know, almost five and a half years, some of those procedural things still trick me up.
Sure. And I was on my attention.
Yeah.
All right, next up is the President's Report. Thankfully, I have a very long list, so bear with me here for a second. It's a great time of year. Uh, some of our upcoming events, uh, here at the middle school, we've got the Spring Pops Concert on May eighth at seven P M. The Steel Drum and Bucket Concert, May thirteenth at seven P M. Eighth Grade Awards Breakfast at, on May seventeenth at six forty-five A M. We have our eighth grade graduation ceremony at Hursey High School on May twenty-first at seven P M. Euclid School has fourth and fifth grade chorus concert on May ninth at seven P M. Field Day, May seventeenth, that's all day. Fifth Grade Sore Up, May twenty-fourth at ten A M. Indian Grove has their fifth grade celebration or sore up on May twenty-fifth as well, fourth as well at nine thirty A M. And then important board meeting dates. Our Operations Committee is meeting on May twenty-eighth at six P M at the Prairie Trails Meeting Room. The Finance Committee is gonna meet on June eleventh at six P M here at the middle school. Our next board meeting will also be on June eleventh at seven P M here at the middle school. And then some district news. Uh, it's Teacher Staff Appreciation Week, so email your favorite teachers. Uh, it's this week, May sixth through the tenth. Communication Specialist Day for Stephanie is on Friday, May tenth. Uh, R T E F Flower Pre-Order Pickup Day is at the middle, here at the middle school, May eleventh between nine and eleven A M. Our End of the Year Celebration is at four-thirty at Rob Roy Country Club on May fourteenth. That's for our retirees and, um, milestone teachers. We have our Day with the Chicago Dogs on May nineteenth. Get your tickets now. Uh, then the last day of school is on May twenty-fourth. That is an early release day. And then next month, won't have anything?
Sorry, I just have one question.
Yeah?
Um, the Finance Committee, is it-
Yes. Talk to me.
Is it the eleventh?
June eleventh at six, what did I say?
No, it was the eleventh, but I thought we were moving it to the seventeenth. Okay, sorry, yeah, skip ahead.
That's okay.
Okay, no, anything else? Next up is the Superintendent's Report. Jody, you have the floor.
Okay, so actually, we'll talk about board meetings. Um, in my Friday update, I had added, um, proposing adding a June twenty-fifth board meeting with the finance meeting the week before. And, and really, um, that will allow Lindell a little bit extra time, but it gives opportunity for the board to approve everything that needs to be done before Lindell's departure, but also gives her a little bit extra time to really tie up the budget projections, um, moving forward so that they're in a really good place, um, before she leaves. Lindell, do you have anything to add to that?
It also gives us some time on the construction analysis too after the Operations Committee meeting. And we're kind of waiting on the D O E to hear about final financing for, uh, our micro degree grant.
Do you think we'll know by then?
Supposed to be by the end of June, so that's getting close to the end of June.
So, um, how do you guys feel about that?
We need to have-
Okay. Okay.
I agree.
Okay. So board meeting, June twenty-fifth? Finance meeting, June eighteenth?
I will be out of town, June eighteenth.
Okay.
So I'm off.
Thought it was June seventeen.
I think I hit the wrong-
Is it Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Okay.
Is it eighteen? In my mind.
Other, either two, Donna and Becky, are you both available?
Yeah. Tuesdays.
You're seventeen?
Eighteenth, Tuesday. My apologies.
Should be.
You're back from Florida? I don't want to get too personal, but you're going.
Yeah, I'll be back from vacation by then.
Okay, good. Couple other little things.
Would we, I'm sorry, location for that meeting?
Um, here is fine.
The finance?
No, the, the board meeting, not June twenty-fifth.
Yeah, here, and then the finance could be at, um, at Delka's. You want to do six o'clock on the finance? Yeah? Six P M, board meeting. Seven P M, board meeting, six P M, finance. And I'll send this off too. In three days.
Yep.
All right. Um, just a other couple of little tidbits. Um, SWIFT K twelve is the platform that we use to send communications. It was something that, um, we transitioned to, I think, when, early on, when Ben started. Um, well, they have just told us about a week or two ago that they're going out of business, um, uh, June thirtieth. So, um, Alicia's done a really nice job of getting some vendors together. We've had some presentations, but just know, I mean, it's not a cost that's gonna come for approval to the board, but just know you're going to see a new communication system at some point going through, um, as a cost. But know that they were bought out by Motorola, and they're basically done June thirtieth, so. That's fun.
Do, do they have a solution we're migrating to?
No, they do not. They said, good luck. So, um, but like I said, Alicia's pulled together. We've already met with three different vendors, three companies, and, you know, just looking for the best, but also a long-term solution, not a Band-Aid, so. Um, y'all got an invite to graduation, so I just want to remind you, if you're attending, please respond to that. Um, the joint annual conference registration opens up. I think those emails went out. Um, you may have seen them this week. So that's going to open the beginning of June, June third. So Patty typically reaches out and asks, you know, who's going, all of that good stuff. Um, what we'd like to do is, if you are requesting a stay longer than just Friday night and leaving Saturday, please contact Patty so that she can, um, extend that stay. You know, we've just found that, like, people, you guys are busy, everybody's busy, but a Saturday night stay is not always feasible for everybody downtown, which is totally great. Um, but we don't want to pay for the, you know, have the added expense if, um, that's not doable for you guys. So the default will be for Friday night, but if you would like, you definitely want to stay Saturday night, just let her know. She's making this. Okay? Okay, a couple other things. Feedback in terms of, um, the buildings' presentations this year. So in the past, we had done a mass, large report out in June of all the buildings, kind of end-of-year update. We talked about our strategic plan, kind of summarized the year. All of the buildings were, were there. This year, we separated those out individually, so I just wanted to get some feedback on how you liked that process compared to the past, so that I can, um, think about next year.
Louis?
Okay, yeah, I loved it. I, I thought this version was much better because we got such a more in-depth analysis as to what's going on in each building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I particularly liked Mr. Timmons and Mrs. Daly's presentations a lot. I feel like I learned a lot. I think for Mr. Timmons, I said I was in a-
Yeah.
You know, PhD class, and-
He was being antiquated.
Yeah, it was, it was great. Um, so I would definitely support that same presentation model of one per month as opposed to just a big mash summary at the end of the year.
I very much agree with that and love to build on it. I mean, just highlighting our individual buildings and programs and, you know, all the good things that are going on there, both from a sporting and an academic standpoint, um, are, I believe, it was really, it was really good.
Yeah.
Really good.
Looks like we're going down the line.
Okay.
Yes, I liked it also. But I also thought that when we had those, we also got information from food and services, transportation, technology. When are we going to see how their goals line up with the strategic plan and what they've done?
Yeah, well, we still plan on doing an end-of-year summary.
Okay.
Um, but just not include all of the buildings. So we're kind of talking about, you know, I wanted to get feedback here, and then we're kind of talking about what that might look like. I would like to bring, um, the data into it, and so you can actually see, like, where buildings are performing compared to the goal that we set on the strategic plan and also the five essentials survey. But we kind of encompass all of those areas, the technology piece, because they're part of the strategic plan. So.
But where, what, what am I thinking, Lindell, what am I thinking of? Where we used to get all of the buildings in here, and they would give us their school improvement plan, and then food and service would talk, transportation. What, what am I mushing two things together? We've done it a variety of ways, and that was one of the ways that we did it. And they would talk about there's, you know, what they'd done the past year and what they were planning to do the next year. So this time, we kind of broke it, broke it up, and they talked about what they've been doing. The principals each talked about their plans individually.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Well, I don't have, I agree with what the principals did for the buildings. What I'm looking for is, and we need the other departments to come in. Yeah, we've kind of done that. We did that with food service. We had a presentation about food service.
Okay, right.
And then, um, there's been quite a bit about technology too. So we've been doing more in-depth kinds of presentations
Okay.
rather than, than one whole big summary, whole big, huge presentation. And there'll be a summary at the budget presentation of each school, but of each area. So it was a different way of doing it, more, more in-depth and spread across the year.
Not going to be redundant. I also liked that we got to go to the buildings instead of having them present here for every single school. And then everything else that everybody said.
I also liked those. I thought that they were amazing. And I'm wondering if we can figure out some way to get that mass of parents to stay then for the meeting. So maybe offer the cookies and the cupcakes at the end of the official board meeting might be nice. But it was amazing to- Yes, it, it was amazing to get to be in the building, hearing the presentation, and actually see physically what was going on. Um, I particularly love the children's presentations. In each building that we went to, it was so rewarding to see what the, the students were doing and their excitement and get the energy of the building. So I was not privy to what was done last year, but just seeing it and being done this way was excellent.
Uh, yeah, I agree with what everybody said. I, one part that I really enjoyed was we did, and it was because of the infrastructure projects we're doing as we went on a tour of Euclid, went on a tour of Indian Grove. And I actually think that's something the board should do at every school, every year. Like, I think we should be going into classrooms, seeing, like, the environment. We're all voting on these things at a very high level of, like, improvements and projects, but like, sometimes seeing things really makes a difference, and it grounds you into what you're doing. So I would recommend that. I don't know if you do it on, like, a hop on a bus and go school to school, and Dan walks us through, or we do it, like, before the meeting that we're at each school, and we're going either way, but I, I think it's important.
We, just to jump in, we're saying we talked and we haven't made a decision yet, decision yet. But as the PR committee meets, we're talking about maybe doing like a different kind of open house for Euclid after the construction's done. So that might be something that would suffice because there'll be new stuff to see.
Yeah, Euclid, but I want, like, I want a tour of trails. I want to see, like, I want to walk around and see what's going on. The people don't have to be in the building.
No, I don't disagree, I'm just saying we're covering that.
Definitely, we should have before and after pictures and a big celebration at Euclid. I agree.
That we'll cover. The only thing I want to add that hasn't been said is I don't necessarily want to replace the meeting with the principals because I'd like to hear, it's great that we heard what they want to do. So I'd like to hear a summary of, did it work, did it not work? What did they learn? What, 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 what do they want to replace it with maybe next year? I mean, everybody has goals, you know, I totally get it. But they don't necessarily meet them. And then that's not a negative as long as it's a learning experience. So I, I don't know what the rest of the board feels about that, but I still would like to hear from the principals during the summer to kind of hear as a very quick, you know, overview of a scenario or I'm sorry, synopsis of how their year went. Maybe a less, like a more kind of business approach to how things went. Yeah, they don't want to get in the weeds, just overview, yeah. We don't want to turn it into a marketing event either. We do have to stay down in the, you know. And having them all here, if they went into damage, that weed would be here forever, which we want to keep an active audience, captive audience. Am I alone in that or?
I'll chime in here. I would think that when they come to do their presentation next year, they say, "Last year, we were going to do da-da-da-da-da-da-da. This and this didn't work out, so this year we're going to do da-da-da-da-da as part of our school improvement plan." I mean, I think it would flow. That's how it used to be. Am I right on that, Lindell? Is that how they do it?
Well, I think we combined, we combined both in June. This is how the year went and this is what I'm looking, you know, this is kind of what I'm looking ahead. So yeah, you kind of.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I agree, they should report back what worked and what didn't.
But then to Bill's point, I think at the end of the year, if we're talking during the summer communication, if I'm understanding you right, that's fresh in their mind from what was going on and then looking towards the new year rather than getting into the new year, having, having a snap brief on that, I think is, is the point of doing.
Yeah, I mean, I think so too. So just, you know, again, the feedback is helpful. I asked the principals how they liked it and they really liked it. Like they enjoyed talking about the work that they were doing and sharing that with you guys in more of a, you know, in some level of detail because they are working really hard. And so to, to, to feel the pressure of having to zip through the presentation in June because they know it's a really long presentation, they really liked being able to go deeper, so.
And the chill.
Yeah. Exactly. Okay, next tidbit of feedback was retirement contracts. I had asked to gain some knowledge of, you know, my own understanding just in terms of how you guys like to handle that for administrators. And so I had shared some information that had been gathered in the, in the area from the local districts in terms of what they have in place. So, so really, like most districts, the, the information I shared was 17 districts don't have a formal plan for administrator retirement. Seven districts do have a formal plan for administrators. Of the 24 districts reviewed, 25% of them follow the teacher contract. 25% follow some type of past practice, which is different than the teacher contract. And 38, the majority, I guess a slight majority, negotiate each one-on-one. So a couple districts had no idea because they really didn't have anybody retire recently that they could remember, so they couldn't even weigh in on the practice of the district. So, and then 12 of the 24 districts offered some type of benefit other than raises. I guess I'm just looking for, if somebody comes to me, an administrator wants to negotiate a retirement contract, I just want some guidance from you in terms of how I should direct them. I feel like I heard a little bit last time that your past practice has been negotiating them one-on-one. So the question is, is that a practice you want to continue?
I'm going to say yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed, yes.
Yes.
I guess I just don't understand the reason, like, why they're negotiating. Like, to me, we have, like, I don't, employment, like, there should be some, there's, there's policies and procedures for everything else, right? And like, everything else is contracted and like agreement and like, you know, usually you get a thing about benefits. I understand this is special because it's retirement, but I feel like there should be some, something, we're just, right, each one is just whatever, just so it's consistent. There's no consistency. There should be a standard. I'm happy to like look at each, I mean, I understand there's like individual situations that could be considered or redone, but like, seems like there should be a baseline, you know? Like there should be something that's done. And you have to accept their retirement either way, right? Like, so you vote on it either way, but it seems to me that there should be some standardization of it. That would be my preference.
And I think, I think when we were discussing this initially, like, my take on it is we have people who are willing to follow the teacher contract, but that teacher contract is locked in. So those individuals have a standard that they have to follow. But then we, but then we don't have any, and same thing for ESP. So we have, you know, EA and the ESP contract. Like we see that things are already set up and that's what they have. I, I don't understand how we don't have that also for administrators. Then sometimes there's the wanted benefit of the teacher contract components. And just it really, I mean, just piggybacking off of Becky, I, I have a really hard time just with nothing.
I think that the, the combination of the diversity of the positions, the frequency that it happens, the, the experience that a person, an individual has, there's a lot of, there's a lot more variations in that than, than there are with the teachers.
How? We have a teacher who's been a teacher for 30 years and when they retire, they get within the contract. I understand, what I'm saying is we want people to play off of, we've had people who've said, "Oh, I want the same increases as the teachers," or "I want the same stipend as the teachers." But, but, but if we're going to use that, then no, then you don't, like, then you don't get anything from the teacher contract. That's what I'm saying, like, that's what gets confusing. Is there are components that we want to cherry pick out of the teacher contract, but then there's no boundaries?
Well, well, part of why I say that we individually negotiated is that we then can discuss all these elements on an individual basis as they come up as infrequently as they do. And we can weigh all of those different parameters. I don't know how, I mean.
Yeah, this just might be something that like we just agree to disagree on. I just don't.
I would, I'd, I'd love to hear a framework. Do you have something like in mind?
I, I don't when you put me on the spot like that. I mean, like, I mean technically I would want to get feedback from a couple people because honestly, like when we go into retirement contracts and we talk through negotiations, like we're establishing things based on a large group of people. And I understand that certain positions are more specialized, but that doesn't mean that other individuals aren't also working hard for their retirement benefits. I just, I find it, so I mean, it's not.
I think that's why I brought to you what 24 different districts do, just to show you, you know, what's out there. I mean, not that it's a grand majority, but it varies. It's not an easy topic, I think that's.
Is this something then that we can come to, again, that happy medium in which there is a structure that we work off of so leaving room for those negotiations? Is that, is that what you're saying, Janine, or are you saying?
No, I think, I think it's kind of like either you have a structure or we just go, right, you just go one-off here and that's where everybody's leaning towards. So I mean, I understand that I'm, from my, well, that we're the minority of this, so that, that's fine. I'm just saying that I was just voicing my opinion on the matter.
Mr. Marra, do you have something?
I do. It's either between framework or ad hoc, I support framework. I think that's the buzzword. And it takes time to develop one. So I'm in favor of spending the time and effort to create, set framework, what parameters we want to set, you know? And there's ranges in there and variables you want to consider. But I think since there's obviously a lot of diversity amongst the 24 districts, there's no real clear set standard. And so to choose a direction to go forward with, I would support, we as a current board, come up with a framework that we want to put in place and determine what those metrics and rubrics are inside of the framework to apply to all administrators, current and future writers.
I was thinking the same, like, I don't know if we even have to list out what the entitlements are, but you say, "Well, we evaluate each person on an individual basis and see what is." We don't even have a framework of a list of questions or a rubric to do that. It's just, is it just vibes? Like, well, how are we evaluating this? Like, and, and, and in fairness, we might evaluate it one way and the next board will evaluate it completely different. And so to me, that's not really fair to an employee either, like.
Is this something that would be decided in committee? Who would be the, who would be the person to set the framework up?
Well, I'm happy to propose something, which is why, because it's going to come to me first. And so I need to know, do I just pass it on to you guys to, to deal with? Or do I kick it back to whoever is the requesting administrator to follow these parameters? Because I know that's what you're comfortable with.
Okay, so let me go back to, the question was, do we want one-on-one contracts or do we want standard? And I thought I heard four people here at the table say they want one-on-one.
I thought I did, but then I thought I heard somebody change their mind.
Kim, did you change your mind?
It wasn't that I changed my mind, I was giving an alternate suggestion, thinking that we could try to come somewhere in the middle. But it was more trying to clarify what Janine was saying. So no, I have not.
Okay.
So one-on-one? You have four one-on-ones.
Okay.
And just to give you some background, I pulled all of the old retirement contracts for administrators that I've been involved in. I mean, I've got a big folder, but I just pulled the most current ones. And what, how it works is they write a letter and tell us what they would like to have. And we as a board say yay or nay. And the, you know, like, one person put, you know, four requests and we only gave that person one of the four. And we as a board said, "No on the other ones." And the, Lindell, when they do the requests, Lindell usually does a spreadsheet on what it's going to cost us. And that's how we as a board decide. What can we afford? How many years' experience they were here? What did they do while they were here? How valuable were they to us? Okay? That's how, that's how we did it.
But is it all, so is it all or nothing? Or is it a negotiation where we could say?
It's more of a negotiation.
Your point two, we like, but we don't like this percentage.
Correct.
And I ask for another clarification, so it's amazing, like you have this knowledge. And when you're evaluating, do you say this person asked for this in your mind, but this person, we gave them this? Like, are you comparing what you did? Because, I mean, it's fair to do that, but unless there's a shared place where all of this information is, I don't know that, future board members don't know that. You see what I'm saying? Like, you, like, I have no place to start in my mind with what's fair and what's not fair because I don't know, there's nowhere that lives where those contracts are.
Well, it really, I mean, what could solve that on some level is standardizing the administrator contracts more so than they are.
We thought it was voted down.
I know, but, but, but that even is negotiated. When somebody comes in, depending on their level, they have their own attorney sometimes. And they are literally negotiating out points with, with them, with the board members at that time. So it's really, I, I'd love to do it, I just don't see it as practically.
Aren't they negotiating off of a standard offer that we first presented?
The state of Illinois, did every superintendent's contract, like even, you know, sorry, Jody, your contract has been carried forward for River Trails contracts for decades. Same thing's true with NSSEO, same thing's true with every district. There is no standardized template. It's, it's kind of ridiculous. Every school district literally does its own thing.
No, I'm saying within River Trails, aren't we giving a kind of standardized offer template to each administrator within our district? And then they can come back and negotiate things, but at least we're starting from a common point.
Yes and no. It's not a clear answer. There is kind of a starting point, but then depending on the individual and the role and the experience and whatever, it's, there are a lot of customization there.
I will say they're mostly similar, besides for the salary point, mostly. Like your vacation, your vacation days are.
They change based on the position.
Right, so I, that I understand, I'm just saying, but like, it, it's mostly, the vacation days are fairly standard, the personal days are fairly standard, how we pay into TRS is fairly standard. So all of those components are fairly standard besides for the salary. I mean, Jody's contract is an exception.
Right, but we're talking about every other administrator other than the superintendent for the sake of this conversation.
Well, could we get back on topic about the retirement contracts or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm just trying to like say, tie, tie it back because I think what we're saying like if, or maybe Becky just said it, if the retirement piece was a part of the initial contract, the framework that.
You will always negotiate a retirement contract. So it won't ever, most likely you're not going to hire somebody with an initial contract, also going to be their retirement contract. It will be a re, they will have to ask for, "I want to retire in this year and this is my retirement contract." So it'll, it should always be a new. I mean, I don't know if I would hire somebody if they're going to retire in, in two years, like.
Because I think the hard part, like, let's take like Ryan Berry who will be coming on. Like if he retires in 20 years or 17 years, I mean, 17 years' landscape could be very different. So it's really, it's hard to plot that far out, but there's a difference between being completely subjective, which is what I feel we are doing right now, because maybe I liked somebody, maybe I thought that they did an awesome job. Maybe you thought they were a bunch of junk and I go, "Give them everything they want." And Donna goes, "Give them nothing."
Right, but then we sit as a board in closed session and ask.
I understand, it's so subjective, so subjective. And then what happens when the person goes, "Well, they got that and why didn't I get that? I did just a good job." I feel, I find that the whole process is, is very subjective and I don't understand how we continue to do this.
So the only thought that I have on that to make that kind of, because the other part is you have, you have people that start at different points in their career. So they're carrying forward practices that are, were practices from the past. The, the only way you could do that, because you, to, to your point, you couldn't with the new school business official have their retirement planned out. But you could point it to like an overall district policy, but then that changes, right? That could change. But then that person has every right to say, "But I want to negotiate that." So no matter what you do, and this is part of why, I was kind of going back to the individual, is no matter what you do, you still end up negotiating certain points. You just can't, it, it, I would love to get some kind of a, a framework around it, but it's, it's, it's impractical with the frequency, the type of positions and all of it. The variables are just too much.
I don't know if we're going to, I mean, it's a four-three split, so obviously it's not a majority. So I don't know if we're going to get to a final resting place. But I think as, as you go forward negotiating the contracts, maybe some framework or standards would come out of that as you see how you guys make decisions or the conversations.
Well, to, to some degree, the past practices are a bit of a framework.
Yeah.
Right? So we, we do have a somewhat of a framework.
Yes. Who man, who manages the past practices? That's my question.
Who manages the past practices? That's my question.
Can we do something different for each agenda?
The seven board members? Yeah.
Which seven board members?
The seven board members.
If John is not here, what do we know what the past practices are? What, that's my point.
The retired past, the people who retired in the past, those contracts, those retirement contracts should be in their personnel file. So when it comes time to somebody, so let's say when Lindell retires, okay? Somebody should, let's pretend you're not here. So, and Bailey is retiring, the person who's replacing you. And you're like, well, what did we give Lindell? Go to her file and look. You pulled out a couple to show us. Everybody's retirement contract is in there, in their personnel file. So you just go pull them and look and see what we've done in the past. The only thing that's not, I can tell you right now, because I went looking, their letter asking for their retirement, their retirement letter, what we, what I asked for, what they asked for.
Initial?
Yes. Hi, I'm retiring, and I would like to have request one, two, three, and four. Those letters, I am sure are not in there.
There's also not a, like, minutes or a record kind of of, from that to the, I guess you could find it, right?
If you go back far enough in the closed session minutes, it's more, the minutes were more spelled out. They were, they talked more about, he said, she said, they asked, they did, they did this, they did it. Nowadays, the minutes are kind of short and sweet. There's not a lot of conversation in there on something like this.
Okay. Good conversation, everyone. I'll move on to district goals. Thanks for the done these first. All right, here we go. Okay, so district goals for next year. So it's just information. We'll come back to, for approval next board meeting. Oh, I turn this off, right? So I put this up. I know you've seen it a hundred times, but I just wanted to make note. The strategic plan ends next year. So in June, I will be bringing some information on options in terms of how to move forward developing a new strategic plan. But the strategic plan obviously informs the district goals. So we're still rolling on our last year here. Okay. So I think this image really accurately represents the work that we've done over the course of the last couple of years. So our strategic plan, we've been in for four years. So coming out of COVID, we really dug into the work of the district. And that phase one, a couple of years ago, was really more awareness. These are the goals from twenty-two, twenty-three. But it was professional development, it was experimenting, it was being very deliberate about some of the work in these separate buckets. So when I say that it was more of awareness and experience, it was learning about adaptive schools, getting the professional development. How do we implement some of this work in our everyday actions? Then phase two, last year, was really taking that work from phase one and then expanding it across the building, in different areas, and just going deeper in some of the work that we had explored in phase one. And then this last phase, this last year of the strategic plan, is really, I would call consolidation. It's bridging everything, it's bringing everything together. And so when I look at the goals, we were very specific and very deliberate a few years ago. We did more application, and we narrowed the focus last year. And then going into this phase three, it's really one goal, and now systems, like systematizing the work and making it part of our everyday actions, rather than separating the work into these buckets. It's all coming together now, so it's really consolidation. So the big goal going into next year is written there. Simultaneously strengthening and anchoring our existing practices into standard organizational systems while addressing lagging or missing components in order to drive student growth. So now systems becomes really the driving force of the work, rather than the work in the individual buckets, if that makes sense. So it's kind of flipped. So my non-negotiables, that, what I'm really looking for, what does that mean? It's using this ongoing application and use of research-based practices. So research-based practices is really how we collaborate. Our instructional practices, our SEL approach, our equity approach. It's all of those good research-based practices that we've been studying and digging into the last few years. I'm looking and expecting a formalized plan to assess, monitor, and shape the head-ready and heart-ready instructional practices. So how are, how are we checking and monitoring that these plans are actually, you know, happening throughout the building? Using data to guide decisions, it's kind of a no-brainer, but we've spent a lot of time, spending time digging into our data and then making good decisions based on that data. And then the organizational leadership skills to facilitate growth and change. So moving buildings forward, making sure that we are facilitating the growth of our kids, the growth of our teachers, and the change that we want to see happen. And then the next few slides really just kind of outline, what does it actually mean in the buildings, in the district? Like, what is the evidence that I will use to know if we're meeting some of these non-negotiables? So my plan is to continue to work on this evidence with the building principals as we roll into summer. But what I did last year was, I had a pre-workout with each building in June. After it said, here, you know, here are the district goals, what are you thinking? Like, where you ended up, it's kind of like the question that was presented earlier. Knowing where you ended last year, what, where are you headed next year? This is what I, this is what I'm looking for. And so we have this preliminary discussion in June. Like, the school year just got out, it was new. And so they kind of toss around what they're thinking and what their direction is. Then they have all summer to kind of roll that around in their mind and think about how to launch that in their building. And then in August, I met with them all again individually and said, all right, where are you at? What are you thinking? And at that point, it's obviously more solidified, like, they're ready to launch with their buildings. And I did that last year, and I found that to be a really great process of dialoguing about evidence, you know, where, where are you headed and what's reasonable? Some building principals, like, they want to hit everything. It's like, guys, that's too much, you know? We want to do a good job. We want to systematize the work. We don't want to just do a lot of stuff. So that's kind of like the next steps after the goals, the district goals are approved, is to kind of, you know, dig into that a little bit more with the buildings. But this, I feel like these areas provide some autonomy for buildings. Like, it helps them build from where they are. And then it gives them some autonomy if they're not exactly in the same place. I'm still looking for research-based instructional strategies, but you may be in a different place than, you know, the elementary or Prairie Trails may be in a different place or a different focus area than the middle school. Questions?
Comments? Thoughts?
Laid out very well.
Yeah, okay?
I think it's great.
Well, great.
I appreciate, I appreciate all your focus on specifically using firm procedures in place to evaluate and assess, and sharing that communication with us was extremely helpful.
Well, yeah, and I think, you know, when the building's presented, you saw them use the structure of then how their work was taken from here. So as we continue that same, similar format, you'll see the same type of system, or sorry, same type of format. So I, hopefully, it all kind of like brings it together for you.
I mean, there were multiple board members who, you know, wanted the district goals to go back to more academic, and this certainly did that. And I thought you accomplished that fantastically. Anybody else? Does that conclude your update?
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, let me entertain a motion and a second to go into closed session for the management personnel at eight thirty-seven PM.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Fisterer, second by Bean Keeney.
That was eight thirty-seven.
Yes, ma'am.
I vote yes. Freedland?
Yes.
Fisterer?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
Bean Keeney?
Yes.
Grinby?
Yes.
And Camardo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's, we'll go into closed session at eight fifty. For everybody, chance to stretch their legs.
No, I didn't even ask yet. I just wanted to have one. So moved by Grinby, second by Freedland.
I got a little, I got a little oversound up there.
To resume an open session, Mr. Mel Fisterer?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
Ronstadt? Grinby?
Yes.
I vote yes. Bean Keeney?
Yes.
And Freedland? Okay. We're open session now. Are you going to do the signing, dahi?
Yes, signi, dahi.
Okay, I know. What is that?
Yeah.
The term?
Yeah.
Okay. Take action? Okay, here it is. Okey-dokey. Go, Mr. President.
Okay, as President Pro Town, I hereby call a twenty-twenty-four Board Reorganization Meeting for the Board of Education, River Trails School District Twenty-Six, to order act nine thirty-nine.
We got a adjourned signing, dahi. There has to be a motion.
I mean, a motion and a second to adjourn, signi, dahi. So move. Moved by Camardo, second by Freedland.
Okay, and we'll call Fisterer.
Yes.
Okay, Bean Keeney?
Yes.
Freedland?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
Grinby?
Yes.
I vote yes. Camardo?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned, and now we go to the next one. Okay. Okey-dokey, go ahead.
As President Pro Town, I hereby call the twenty-twenty-four Board Reorganization Meeting for the Board of Education, River Trails School District Twenty-Six, to order at nine thirty-nine PM. Mrs. Johnson, could you please call it?
Okay. Freedland?
Yes, here.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, wait a second.
No, wait, I got the wrong one. Attendance, I'm sorry. Hang on, I can't pull up attendance.
It'll take another record.
It'll take another record, okay. Bean Keeney?
Here.
Camardo?
Here.
Freedland?
Here.
Grinby?
Here.
I'm here. Fisterer?
Here.
And Ronstadt?
Here.
Okey-dokey, now hang on.
It'll save you attendance.
Uh-huh. Okay, so now.
The election of officers.
Okay. Just take action. Take action, Bianchini. Discussion.
Did I agree?
Oh.
That was actually.
Sorry.
No problem. Our first order of business is the election of Board of Officers. I'd like to entertain nominations from the floor to elect a temporary chair to conduct the election of the Board President. I hereby nominate Mrs. Johnson as the temporary chair. With no further nominations, I declare the nomination to elect temporary chair closed. I'd like to entertain a motion, a second, to approve Mrs. Johnson as the temporary chair. Motion. Second.
And I'll call the whole, I take it?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, okay, I vote yes. Grumpy?
Yes.
Bianchini?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
Fisterer?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
And Ronstadt?
Yes.
Save the air. Okay, right there. Okay. Save the air. I'm just gonna leave it. Just keep going?
Just keep.
Okey-dokey. Um, the first order of business will be the election of President of the Board of Education, River Trail School District Twenty-Six, to serve until the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five Board Reorganization meeting and until their successor is elected and qualified. I hereby entertain nominations from the floor to conduct the election for Board President.
I would like to nominate Mr. Grumpy for Board President.
With no further nominations, I declare the nominations to elect a Board President closed. I would like to entertain a motion, in a second, to approve Mr. Grumpy as Board President. Here.
Uh, motion made by me.
Second.
Okay. Now hang on one second. Let me get back to my, okay. Uh, Camardo?
Yes.
Fisterer?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
Grumpy?
Yes.
Bianchini?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes, but I wanna hear a speech.
And I vote yes. Congratulations, Mr. Grumpy.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Okay, I'd like to recognize the next order of business, which is the election of Vice President for the Board of Education, River Trail School District Twenty-Six, to serve until the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Board Reorganization meeting and until their successor is elected and qualified. I hereby entertain nominations from the floor for the Office of Board Vice President.
I would like to nominate Ms. Friedland as Board Vice President.
With no other nominations, I declare the nominations to elect a Vice President closed. I'd like to entertain a motion, a second, to nominate Mrs. Friedland as Board Vice President until the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Board Reorganization meeting. Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ronstadt and second by Mrs. Fisterer.
Okay. Grumpy?
Yes.
Bianchini?
Yes.
Uh, Ronstadt?
Yes.
I vote yes. Fisterer?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mrs.
Okay, I'd like to recognize the next order of business to be the election of Secretary of the Board of Education for River Trail School District Twenty-Six, to serve until the twenty-four, twenty-five Board Reorganization meeting and until his or her successor is elected and qualified. I hereby entertain nominations from the floor for the Office of Board Secretary. I would love to nominate Mrs. Johnson as Board Secretary. With no further nominations, I declare nominations for the Office of Board Secretary closed. I'd like to entertain a motion, a second, to nominate Mrs. Johnson as Board Secretary until the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five Board Reorganization meeting. So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Camardo and seconded by Mrs. Fisterer.
Okay. Ronstadt?
Yes.
Bianchini?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
Grumpy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, Friedland?
Yes.
And Fisterer?
Yeah, yes.
Congratulations, Madam Secretary. Next order of business is to establish the time, dates, and location of regular board meetings. Uh, this is a discussion item, all the dates and time and stuff are in your board book. So I'd like to entertain a motion, a second, to adopt the established times, dates, and locations of the River Trail School District Twenty-Six Board of Education meetings from May ninth, May eighth, twenty-twenty-four, to May sixth, twenty-twenty-five.
Move. Second.
Okay.
Moved by Fisterer, second by Bianchini.
Okay. Uh, Friedland?
Yes.
Fisterer?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
I vote yes. Bianchini?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
Grumpy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, our order of business is the committee assignments and board appointments. I'd like to entertain a motion, a second, to adopt the committee assignments as presented in your board book.
Moved.
Moved by Fisterer, second by Grumpy.
Okay. Fisterer?
Yes.
I vote yes. Bianchini?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
Grumpy?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
And Ronstadt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our final order of business is to adopt prior policies, rules, and regulations. Can I entertain a motion, a second, to adopt prior River Trail School District Twenty-Six policies, rules, and regulation as presented? Second, Friedland, second by Ronstadt.
Ronstadt?
Yes.[1756.41]